Let's do it.
Councilmember Remi, will you listen to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Reverend Ernest Mensah Upunim of Eternal Word Ministries to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council.
Hallelujah. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for the opportunity to be here as a community, as your people that you have set in place. Leadership comes from you. Your word says that if anyone lacks wisdom, we should ask of you. It is you who give it in abundance. Father, in the name of Jesus, we pray for wisdom for our leadership. We pray for the spirit of counsel, unity, understanding, to dwell amongst them. Father, even as we are seated today to plan and to legislate things concerning our community, I pray, Father, let anything that passes out of here be in your will. Let it be in the betterment of our community and our people. I pray for the spirit and the grace and the wisdom to dwell in this house. Out of this house, let great legislations come out. Out of this city, oh Lord, let your glory be seen in the life of many. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dismissed with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi President Harden.
Are there any additional, are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Here, none. The journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be ran into the record?
None at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go around the dais for updates and resolutions, starting with Councilmember Bangston.
Thank you, Council President. Just one announcement. Wanted to acknowledge a special person from my office. I know many times we get to see us as elected officials here on the dais and we get to do so much amazing work, but really only that work is possible because of the great folks that we have behind us. And so I was blessed to enter into City Hall into this term in 2022, and I was very intentional about making sure that I had a all-black male staff, but also a dynamic staff. And unfortunately, I'm losing one of our pillars in our office, that and Kevin Jones. We know him around here as Kev, and anybody who has engaged with my office knows exactly who Kevin is. I always jokingly say he tells me where to go, what to wear, what time to be there, and everything else. But also is the person that when you call my office, he's the first person that you hear from. He has been a great asset to our office. He is going off to the Rise Institute and really excited about the work that he will continue to do for this community, just in a different facet. But I want to personally and publicly thank him for all of the work that he has done to advance not only the priorities of my office, but the priorities of every council member on this dais. And his mark will be left here at City Hall, but more importantly, will be left on the countless number of residents that we have touched. So definitely want to thank you, Kevin Jones. Wave your hand. He's back there. He's probably shy. Yeah. He's actually not shy. But I definitely want to thank you again for all of your service. Wish you well in your next endeavor. And also, just an announcement to the public, we do have a replacement for Kevin Jones. That is Jonathan Brown, who will be rejoining our office. He was an intern in our office, but wanted to make sure that folks, when you call our office, we're going through a transition right now, but it should be smooth. And also, again, if you get a chance to send a congratulatory note to Kevin Jones, I'm sure he would appreciate it. So thank you again, Kevin, for your service to my office and to our community.
Thank you, councilmember. Congratulations, Kevin. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
I have a number of announcements. First of all, it's a replacement. His role will be felt because you are irreplaceable. I want to first, we have some special guests in City Hall chambers that are actually up in the galley. I want to give a shout out to Age Friendly Innovation Center scholars and thank them for coming out. This is the second year that they've been coming out. So as Chair of the Senior Disability and Veteran Affairs, we work very closely with COAA and with the Age Friendly. And so bringing in these scholars, whether they will continue on as social workers or go into other fields through their experiences with Age Friendly, we were just talking about this, we hope that their perspective of the world will change and that they will continue to make our city a better city for our aging population. So I just want to thank them for being here today and for the great conversation we had and for all the work they do throughout the year. So I have a couple of announcements. First, 614 Beautiful applications are due October 29th at 5:00 PM. 614 Beautiful is a program that we started to become, to create more beautiful spaces in every corner of Columbus. So this is an opportunity for community members, community organizations to apply. This year, we're very excited that we have raised the amount of the grants from $10,000 to $15,000 that folks can access. And this is, again, open to anyone in the community. There is a process. You can visit 614beautiful.org. And I want to give a couple shout outs to the Hilltop Arts Collective Tell Your Story mural dedication that happened last Monday while we were here at council. This past weekend, we also had a dedication for the Art in the Garden showcase at the Growing Hearts and Hands Community Garden on the Near East Side. You can see that these projects go from a 3D bus stop that we're funding to a mural to a pocket park. So we're looking, we're very excited about all the innovations that you will bring to us, Columbus. So be sure to visit the website and apply today. Secondly, and I know that my fellow Women's Caucus member will speak to Day of the Girl, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but I do want to acknowledge that this Wednesday is the International Day of the Girl, and it was created to increase attention on issues that matter to girls amongst government, policymakers, and the general public, and to create more opportunities for girls to have their voices heard on the global stage. This Wednesday, we have joined with Erin Pink and the ICE Youth Empowerment Center to hold the Second Annual Girls Will Summit at the Columbus City Prep School for Girls. And at the summit, Girls Will, we will help to empower and inform girls on gender inequalities, its impact, and give them a platform to share their lived experiences that impacts their girlhood with policymakers. So in the coming weeks, we're actually going to have some of the girls from the summit come and not only share what they learned, but actually share some policy ideas with this council and with the general public. So we're very excited to hear more about their experiences. And then lastly, this is a special invitation. It is still Latino Heritage Month. It's been the longest month, I'm sure folks feel that, but the best month. And we will be partnering with Franklinton Fridays, The Good Market, and Wild Goose Creative for El Futuro, or The Future, art showcased that will feature mixed media artists, live performances, and the Esperanza, or Hope, community awards and more. So the event starts at 6:00 PM and it lasts until 10:00 PM at Wild Goose Creative in Franklinton, and we hope folks will join us. And that is all for me. Council President.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Brown? Thank you, Sarah. Councilmember Dorans?
Thank you, Council President. I do have a couple resolutions here tonight. I would like to invite Columbus Marathon Race Director Darris Blackford to the podium. As I introduce Resolution 0190X-2023, to recognize the 43rd Nationwide Children's Hospital Columbus Marathon for celebrated race in the community, exceptional fundraising, and groundbreaking research. Nationwide Children's Hospital is honored to be the title beneficiary for the Columbus Marathon and Half Marathon in 2023, and marks the 12th year of this strong partnership. Thus far, this event has raised over $12 million for the hospital. The 43rd Nationwide Children's Hospital Columbus Marathon and 17th Annual Half Marathon will take place this Sunday, October 15th, throughout the heart of Capitol City, right here in Columbus. We encourage folks to register. Are there still spots left? All sold out, so too late. So those who have a spot, we want to commend them for not only participating in the event, but helping to raise money for such a worthy cause. Certainly celebrating all the patients at Nationwide Children's, and certainly the dedication of the race to help this incredible institution that folks are either running a 5K, 13.1 miles, or 26.2 miles. There's two additional events on Saturday. It's part of the marathon weekend, the Jesse Owens 5K and the One Mile Fun Run and Walk presented by Park National Bank. The 5K will be a timed race for runners and walkers, and the One Mile Fun Race and Walk will be an untimed family fun event. The Columbus Marathon also partners with Columbus Recreation and Parks Department to host the Highlights Kids Run on Saturday, October 14th, that which is free for all children ages 3 to 11. Want to again, just congratulate, what a great event this is. This is one of my favorite events in Columbus and just a really great opportunity to highlight the important work that Nationwide Children's Hospital does in our community every single year. Certainly, I've run this race a number of times, and one of my favorite things is so many of the mile markers, you've got patients that are out there that are greeting so many of the runners and walkers and thanking them for helping to raise money. Truly, it's not just any other race. It's really, when you think about the kids being out there that are directly affected by the money that's raised, it really says a lot about this community and says a lot about this race in particular. So with that, would love to turn the mic over to Director Blackford and hear what's going on this year.
Well, thank you, Council President Harden, Councilman Dorans, and members of council. Actually, Sarah Irvin is our PR director. I might have to, she, you may challenge her for that job. That was quite the, quite the presentation. So thank you. I'm Darris Blackford, Race Director, the Nationwide Children's Hospital Columbus Marathon and Half Marathon. I, like Taylor Swift, love the number 13. So I'm especially excited that this is the 13th time I've addressed council on behalf of the Columbus Marathon. I'm also thrilled that we do have a sold-out field of 12,000, including Councilman Dorans, this year. And we also have another 1,000 people, as he said, representing or honoring Jesse Owens in the 5K and One Mile. And we have several hundred children taking part in the Columbus Recreation and Parks Kids Run. If you add all that up, that's 13,000 people. Speaking of 13, this, we've already surpassed $13 million in terms of the money we've raised for children's hospitals since 2012. I'm very proud of that impact, but I'm equally proud of the incredible financial footprint the Columbus Marathon makes on our community. We are a nonprofit event, supporting a nonprofit hospital, yet we do not receive any public financial support. That means we pay tens of thousands of dollars to the city for law enforcement, fire, and other safety services, medical. We pay the Red Cross for our support there, plus permits, trash services, and more. Hundreds of thousands of dollars to local companies for things like equipment, labor, printing, and we generate millions of dollars each year for local hotels and restaurants. Thank you, council, and the entire city of Columbus for the support of the Columbus Marathon for the last 43 years, and here's hoping for continued success in our partnership. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Anyone else joining Councilman Dorans out in here in the council? You're going to cheer him on at least, right? Yes, yes. So thank you very much again, and I appreciate your support so much.
Yeah. Thank you, Director. And unlike prior years, where I've made the joke about only being half crazy and running the half marathon, my wife convinced me fully crazy this year and run the full marathon with her. So if you ever want to answer the question, are you faster than a council member? The answer is probably yes, but we'll find out, find out on Sunday. So with that, I would like to move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remi President Harden.
Adopted.
Also delightful because I get to wear my running shoes here tonight rather than any dress shoes. So at least an excuse anyways. Council President, with your permission, I'd like to move to a resolution that is in the Building and Policy Zoning Committee? Thank you. Resolution number 079X-2023, to adopt and support the Zone In project goals and Phase One priorities. Council President is a co-sponsor of this legislation. I want to turn over the floor to you for your remarks.
Sure. Thank you, Press Pro Tim, and thank you for bringing this really important resolution. We are in the middle of a really important conversation, marks a critical point in our city's history as we plan for how we grow together. We all know Columbus and Central Ohio are growing. The city is working to embrace the opportunities of growth while also addressing the challenges that it brings. We know that we are underbuilding by about 7,000 housing units a year relative to the demand, and that's to say nothing of the whole of underlying underbuilding we have to get ourselves out of from the last decade. The single most important thing that we can do to build more housing is redesign our zoning code, which is what the Zone In initiative is all about. This project will lead to the first comprehensive overhaul of the citywide zoning code since 1950s, paving the way for sustainable development. This project is divided into two phases, and this resolution pertains to Phase One along our corridors. This resolution before us today does not change our zoning code yet, but what it does do is set a statement of our principles about how we are seeking to evolve our city's code. What we want is a zoning code that enables and encourages the kind of growth that we want to see, that is equitable, that is affordable, that creates livable corridors and supports vibrant neighborhoods, and that reverses the historic wrongs of our zoning code that for decades was used as a tool of exclusion. Councilmember Dorans, again, thank you for bringing this resolution. Thank you to the Department of Development, all those folks who are leading this effort, and then thank you to the residents who are participating by the hundreds and thousands to be a part of this historic moment as we look to not just grow bigger, but grow better. Councilmember Floris, put yours.
Yep. Thank you, Council President. As you mentioned, this resolution reinforces council's support for the five priorities introduced back at our public hearing on August 21st. The zoning project goals and Phase One priorities draw on thousands of points of engagement, extensive technical analysis, adopted land use and community plans, as well as larger efforts such as the Columbus Housing Strategy, LinkUS, and the Columbus Climate Action Plan. It's also important to note that no priority is listed in a particular important, particular ranking of importance. All five of these priorities are equally vital and supported by this body. Priority is to leverage corridors, create more housing in more places to help address cities, our cities' regional housing shortage by supporting changes that make it easier and more likely to build more housing as the current zoning code does not support housing creation. A second priority is to support Main Street jobs and businesses with opportunities to grow their customer base nearby, and greater flexibility to adapt to a changing market dynamics as the current zoning code does not support local business. A third priority is promote equitable development with a code that relies on clear, objective standards, and is easier to navigate as the current zoning code does not support equity or easily accessed by folks not familiar with it. A fourth priority is to expand the role of corridors and creating healthy, connected communities by reinforcing land use patterns that support alternatives to using a car and provide better access to jobs, education, healthcare, and housing as the current zoning code does not support transit, walkability, and biking. A fifth priority is to foster good urban design and appealing Main Streets, support investment in communities, and ensure high quality of life for residents as the current zoning code does not support quality design standards. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to Director of Growth Policy for the City, Mr. Kevin Wheeler, to explain how we got to the point we're at tonight and regarding the adoption of these five priorities before council. Mr. Wheeler, floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you very much, President Pro Tim, Dorans, President Harden, members of council. Pleased to be here this evening to talk about this project and this resolution. Council President Harden, you took a lot of my speaking points, so thank you for that. You've covered those things. I do want to say that, you know, because we as a city and region are faced with the pressures and opportunities of growth, as you said, you know, it's time for us to reexamine the ways that we manage growth, and our zoning code is one of the fundamental ways in which we do that. So we need a modernized zoning code throughout the city. But the size of the city, the complexity of the tasks, means that we need to do a phased approach, and we're starting with corridors, key corridors. We call them our Main Streets, just because of their opportunity to support housing, transit, local business, and related goals. There are over 140 miles of these corridors that are included, and we are working to develop a series of mixed-use districts, new districts or zones that we could be applying in these areas. And I want to acknowledge Building and Zoning Services Director Scott Messer, Director Messer's here this evening, and BZS and Development are working on this effort in partnership even as we rely on support from, from you. These priorities were developed, drawing on, as you said in the, as you read the resolution, thousands of points of input. Going back two and a half years ago when we did the assessment phase, when we really tried to figure out how we could move forward to revise our code, we'd done a survey that had over 3,000 participants. In addition to that, we've benefited from guidance in our area plans, our adopted land use plans and community plans throughout the city that really tend to reinforce over and over again the importance of these corridors and the role that they can play. The Zone In effort started with Undesign the Red Line, where we talked about the history, the unfortunate history, not only of zoning in this country, but things like redlining and deed restrictions, and how we need to do better as we move forward. We've had a series of community events and workshops, open houses, and have really benefited from input that we've received from those, as well as some of our parallel efforts or aligned efforts like LinkUS, like the Climate Action Plan, our housing strategy, all things that really dovetail to the work that we're doing with zoning. We are at a phase now where we are moving from the broader objectives of the work to really beginning to refine our thinking about new zoning. And so as we do this, there are a number of opportunities for outreach that I want to call attention to. The first is a survey. It's a digital survey that's out just now, and I think we left some cards on the table over there by the exit where you can grab information about that. You can always go to our website. It's columbus.gov/zoningupdate, and you can find the survey there. We want as many people as possible to take it. We're up to 600 for the first soft launch week, so we're excited. We're hoping to go well beyond that in the next week or two alone. We will be having a series of open houses, four open houses, beginning October 21st. I think the last one currently scheduled is November 2nd, but these are three-hour open houses, but that doesn't mean you come for three hours. That means it's a window of time that we hope that you find convenient. So pick the time and location that works best for you. They're all the same format, and that'll be an opportunity to talk to the team and the staff about this work and about the strategies that we intend to pursue to achieve these priorities. We are doing a mailing for property owners and renters, both commercial and residential, within these areas to make sure that they're aware of the effort. And then finally, we do have a website, email, and phone line that you can access if you have any questions at any point in the process, would like some feedback. At this point, the work that we're doing is all really aimed at having a draft code and map update in the spring of 2024. And, you know, our goal is to move pretty quickly for passage by this body. When we get that at a point where we're ready to move forward, and then we're going to want to move into the next phase because we know that there's, there's an urgency here, and we are doing our best to respond to that. So those are my comments. If you have any questions, or if not, then I know there are some speakers who would like to talk as well.
Thank you, Director. Any questions from any of my colleagues, from Mr. Wheeler? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We do have several speakers on this resolution. The first one to come before council is Mr. Michael Wilkos. Mr. Wilkos, welcome back to council, sir.
President Harden and members of Columbus City Council, my name is Michael Wilkos, and I'm a resident of the University District. Over the years, I've served on three city commissions: Italian Village, the University District, and the Transportation and Pedestrian Commission. It is no secret that Columbus is growing. Since 2010, our city has added 120,000 people, or 55% of all of the growth in the entire state occurred just within our city limits. This growth is exciting, but it also comes with it the responsibility to maintain the quality of life for the next generation. I believe Zone In will do just that. In my professional role with United Ways Central Ohio, I have the honor to serve more than 90 nonprofit organizations, working every day to serve children and families in need. This network of nonprofits is serving tens of thousands of people who struggle to find safe, decent, and affordable housing due to the current housing shortage. More recently, it has become the staff at these nonprofits who find difficulty in maintaining housing due to the lower cost, lower-than-average wages, rather, paid among many nonprofits. Both the lack of housing and where that housing gets built must be addressed soon. Just a few years ago, we were a region where the housing stock was readily available and well-aligned with incomes and demographics. Today, we are a housing market with several serious problems related to scarcity and geography. In addition to the lack of housing is that spatial distribution of jobs, housing, and transportation, where affordable housing is far removed from job centers, and the transportation connections to work, school, medical, and social engagements has become difficult in such a spread-out city. I believe Zone In can help repair the loss of vitality in urban core neighborhoods and help guide existing growth. I am particularly excited to see the expanded role of corridors in creating healthy, connected communities by reinforcing land use patterns that support alternatives to using a car and provide better access to jobs, education, and healthcare. This is particularly important for the more than one-third of the people in our city that meet United Ways eligibility, households who earn at 200% of the federal poverty level and struggle to make community connections and be stable with their housing. I am excited. The Zone In work will create a modern zoning code that promotes a sustainable and equitable city and creates more housing in more places to help address our current housing shortage and create changes that will bring vitality and residence to those growth corridors within existing urban neighborhoods. As was previously said, said by Councilmember Dorans, Zone In coupled with major initiatives like LinkUS, the Climate Action Plan, and the Columbus Housing Strategy will greatly contribute to ensuring the current prosperity of our region will continue for next generations. Thank you for your commitment to building a better city, and thank you for your commitment to Zone In and all of its attributes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkos. Any questions from members? Thank you for being here tonight. Always appreciate your advocacy. The next speaker to come before council on this ordinance is Ms. Carly Booz. Welcome back to council.
Good evening, Council President Harden, Chair Dorans, members of council. My name is Carly Booz, and I am representing the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio. We join you tonight to share our thanks and support for Resolution 179X, adopting goals for the zoning modernization project. Central Ohio's historic housing shortage and the exponential deficit of new homes is a defining feature of our housing challenge, is a core driver of housing inflation, skyrocketing our rents, and pushing homeownership further out of reach for far too many. And while Columbus leads the nation in innovative housing solutions, we must also recognize that our current zoning code stands in the way of progress and is preventing the scale of construction that is necessary to truly solve this problem. These laws, written three generations ago for a city that looks nothing like our own, are binding us to the technological, bureaucratic, and social status quo of the 1950s. And in doing so, it fails to reflect the values of our modern society. It is in those shared values which define and unify Columbus that the alliance most strongly believes. We believe that housing is dignity, that a generous and caring community as Columbus so obviously is will not stand by while homelessness takes root on our streets. We believe that housing is security, that a home is a place to start a family and to launch a career and to nurture one's faith, and that we must protect that fundamental truth of our Midwestern culture. We believe that housing is We believe that housing is growth, that investing in the homes of today will bring the jobs of tomorrow, unlocking prosperity for an entire region, and that through housing, we can ensure this economic tide is one that lifts all ships. We believe, most fundamentally, that housing is social, that it is the connective tissue that brings people together, and by allowing housing with transportation systems and education systems and our healthcare systems, that those relationships will grow stronger and more resilient. And finally, we believe that housing is justice. We know that racial segregation and inequity was achieved through housing policy, and it must now be unwound by intentionally dismantling that hate. We know that the zoning code doesn't have to use the word redlining to have that effect, and it is incumbent upon all of us to ensure that it does not. These values are universal, and the Alliance is proud to see them explicitly placed at the forefront of this project through this resolution. We are, pardon me, when we are drawn to give in to our fear, when we are inclined to resist or deny change, when we are tempted to retreat from this work, I hope that we will all turn to these shared values for the courage to continue fighting for Columbus and for the strongest Columbus that is possible. I want to thank you for leading us forward.
Thank you, Ms. Booz, for that testimony here tonight. Any questions from colleagues? Thank you very much for your advocacy. And finally, the last speaker to come before council on this resolution is Mr. Omar Hajmusa. Welcome to council, sir. Good to see you again, thank you. Floor is yours.
President Harden, President Dorans, council, I'm here in my personal capacity as a 35-year-old resident of Columbus, a senior lender for over two decades, a former area commissioner, and a civic association president. And I want to talk personally about the things I've seen in my neighborhood and my adopted neighborhood of Wyland Park and my new neighborhood of King Lincoln. What I've been seeing is unfortunately displacement due to rising rents, I've been seeing overcrowding, people struggling to find reliable transportation, I've seen people living out of their cars, and this is, you know, going to just get worse because of the issues that we're dealing with currently. And so the issues of trying to prevent this through rezoning, it's already here. What we need to do now is work expeditiously to prevent it from getting worse. So professionally, I work as a lender for a community development financial institution, and I'm a statewide lender, so I see the whole state and all of the different issues that are facing different cities. Columbus is unlike any other city in the Midwest. Many cities are declining in population, so on and so forth, and Columbus is an anomaly. However, the prosperity hasn't been shared uniformly. And I think rezoning done in the right way, with the right conditions, can assist with that escalation of prosperity being divvied out specifically for small businesses. In my experience, capital flows to the path of least resistance, and there are social constructs that prevent capital from getting to its destination. And a lot of those social constructs are the isms, right? Racism, sexism, ableism, so on and so forth. And so having, updating the zoning code along with all the other things that we're doing allows for more equitable.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from colleagues? I think we're good. Thank you, sir. Did want to pause and see if any of my colleagues did have any comments regarding the resolution before we moved on. Seeing none, I also want to thank the speakers for being here tonight. Obviously, we've talked a lot about housing at council for months, if not years at this point, and the zoning code is always part of that discussion holistically, and I'm excited to be at the point where we're talking about priorities for this to move forward, to have legislation in front of this body in 2024 for us to act on, to actually dig in and really do the big thing here, and try to ensure that we have a code that supports the goals that we've outlined here tonight. So with that, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And before we move on, I did want to plug one last time, you can take the survey that Director Wheeler mentioned earlier at zoningsurvey.columbus.gov for folks to be able to engage on this topic. But with that, Council President's all I have tonight.
Thank you, President Pro Tim. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. This Wednesday, October 11th, is the Big Table. This is a day that's dedicated to community-wide conversation. Through intentional dialogue and connection, participants are encouraged to imagine the next steps toward a kind and just future for all. My office will be hosting a Big Table Talk in partnership with the Commission on Black Girls on Wednesday, October 11th, at 3:30 PM at Independence High School. Since it is also International Day of the Girl on Wednesday, our discussion will be on the state of Black girls in Columbus. We will be joined by local leaders such as Commissioner Erica Crowley, Representative Latina Humphrey, as well as girls from across our city, to engage in a robust discussion on Black girls, to hear what is most important to them, and how best we as local leaders can support them. For more information or to RSVP, please reach out to my legislative assistant at knasiedu@columbus.gov. Now, it is my honor to present a few resolutions. At this point, I'd ask and welcome Ms. Noreen Warnock and Michelle Brown from Local Matters to the podium. It's now my honor to present Resolution 191X/2023, to commemorate Local Matters' 15th anniversary and recognize the Organization for Their Services to the City of Columbus. Local Matters was founded in 2008 to address a gap in our food system that leaves many without access to nutritious food and that does not support the health of people, communities or the land. Since their founding, Local Matters has created an impact that has rippled across Central Ohio over the last 15 years through its continued investment in comprehensive food education, equitable access to food and community-focused advocacy efforts. Today, it is estimated that one in eight people face hunger in Ohio, and more so, one in seven children in Ohio do not have consistent access to the food they need to fuel their minds and bodies. Everyone has a right to healthy and nutrient-dense food, excuse me. And with that motivation in mind, Local Matters creates actionable change through weekly veggie van markets, hands-on cooking classes and meetings with community advocates to discuss hurdles in our food system. Through this combination of programming, Local Matters has reached well over 100,000 community members, including over 80 schools, recreation centers and healthcare centers, among others, since its inception. With that, I will now turn the podium over.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Favor, Council President Harden, Councilmembers Brown, Barosa de Padilla, Bangston, Remy and Dorans. It's an honor to be here, and the proclamation really pretty much says it all. We are thrilled to be celebrating our 15th anniversary along with others in our community, and I wanted to thank our co-founders, Noreen Warnock and Michael Jones, as well as council, because you've been invested in this work alongside of us. Tonight, we're hearing a lot about transportation and housing, and you're working on all of those fronts and have had a lot of leadership in the food system as well, so thank you. Thank you also, Councilmember Tyson, who helped us to spearhead the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan. All of that work sets in motion, just like the zoning work you're doing, to make sure that everybody has access to food, to housing, to transportation, to make this an even better city, and so we are thrilled for that support and honored to be with you here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the work that you all continue to do to serve our residents in Columbus. Are there any additional questions or concerns by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Resolution 193X/2023, to recognize and celebrate the Ohio Hispanic Coalition's SOI Latina Victim Empowerment Services Program and their work to end domestic violence. October is Domestic Violence Month. Domestic violence impacts men, women and children of every age, background and belief. Nearly one in three women and one in four men in the United States have suffered abuse from an intimate partner, and in 2020, there were more than 15,259 domestic violence calls in Columbus and Central Ohio. October 15th also marks the end of Hispanic Heritage Month. I'd now like to invite our folks to come on up, Sarah Brown. Since 1990, the Ohio Hispanic Coalition has been a leading voice of advocacy for the Latino and Hispanic communities throughout the center, improving the well-being and quality of life of all Latinos through advocacy, education, training and access to quality services. In 1999, they established their SOI Latina Victim Empowerment Services Program, which provides empowerment services for Latino, Hispanic victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, dating violence, family violence, human trafficking and other victims of crime. The program trains bilingual and bicultural community members to serve as victim advocates, educators and caseworkers grounded in the traditions and beliefs within the Latino culture. The specialists cater to the individualized needs of the Latino/Hispanic community and the victims to create a safe space where they have access to information, advocacy, support and wraparound services that are culturally and linguistically responsive of Latino and Hispanic communities. It is now my honor to turn the podium over.
Awesome, thank you so much. Oh, that's so loud. Thank you so much, Councilmember Favor, President Harden and all the members here in council today. My name is Sarah Brown, I'm the program officer here at the Ohio Hispanic Coalition, where Columbus is first and longest-running Latino nonprofit agency established since 1990. Our agency is committed to improving the well-being and quality of life of all Latinos, and we do that through advocacy, education, training and access to quality services. We provide, like a council member has said, culturally and linguistically appropriate direct services reflective of our diverse 21 Latino countries that our Latino residents are representative here in our city. On behalf of our agency, I would like to thank Councilmember Sheila Favor and all the members of City Council to recognize the Ohio Hispanic Coalition specifically for the work of our SOI Latina, which means I Am Latina Victim Services Program. It currently remains the only Latino-specific victim services program in Columbus and Central Ohio since 1999. We are especially honored by this recognition as it falls during the Month of Domestic Violence Awareness, honoring our Latino heritage and also honoring our indigenous heritage and roots, today being Indigenous Peoples' Day. For Latino victims of domestic violence, issues like language access, cultural differences, lack of knowledge and community resources available, mistrust in systems, financial hardship and immigration status are barriers to safety today still in Columbus. SOI Latina program was created to address and overcome these barriers experienced by Latino victims when accessing services. The program implemented evidence-based practices by utilizing promotoras specialists who are bilingual, bicultural community members committed to serving the communities they come from to inform, educate and provide community orientation, systems navigation for Latino victims. The program provides trauma-informed and client-centered programming as well as through case management, safety planning, victims' rights education, court accompaniment, emotional support, legal medical advocacy, crisis intervention, life coaching and access to community resources we have here in the city to promote victim safety and autonomy. We honor our Latino and indigenous heritage by integrating healing practices by making tea, aromatherapy with essential oils, dance, music, storytelling, crafts and other cultural activities. These activities serve as tools to engage Latinas while providing education and prevention of violence through our community empowerment groups. Over the years, SOI Latina Victim Services Program have become a leading expert in culturally and linguistically specific practices for Latino victims and services in Ohio to educate and empower our communities to prevent and end domestic violence once and for all. In 2022, our SOI Latina program served 307 victims through 860 services this past year. 92% of participants reported that they had increased feelings of empowerment, safety and increased knowledge of community resources. This success serves as a testimony of sustainable solutions in effectively addressing the needs of all Columbus residents, specifically through culturally and linguistically appropriate programs and community navigation like the Ohio Hispanic Coalition has provided for the last 33 years. We ask for your continued collaboration in providing equitable resources to support the social, educational and economic advancement of the 6.5% and growing Latino population we have here in Columbus. Again, we are truly grateful for the support of the City of Columbus in providing this opportunity to highlight our SOI Latina Victim Services Program. We look forward to our continued partnership and advocacy to end all forms of violence in our community. And together, like civil rights activist Cesar Chavez said once, "Se se puede, we can do this together, let's do this." Thank you so much, muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, and, you know, unfortunately, domestic violence has been up the last few years, and so it was important for this legislative body to provide a moment of awareness, also honoring Hispanic Heritage Month, but also connecting residents with the proper resources that are going to be able to help them at their most vulnerable time. And so if someone does need the resources of your organization, how can they get in touch?
Yes, the best mode of contact, we have a phone number and intake line that can be even, send me an email, and I have the number available as well.
You're welcome to provide.
Okay, we will do that.
And are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row. Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, I invite the amazing women from the Brown Girls Mentoring to the podium, excuse me. Resolution 0194X/2023 is to recognize the partnership of the Commission on Black Girls and Brown Girls Mentoring, working together to improve the quality of life of Black girls and celebrate October 11th, 2023, as International Day of the Girl in the City of Columbus. The International Day of the Girl is a day of observation highlighting the gender inequality that begins during early adolescent years through adulthood. Girls across the globe face challenges regarding their legal rights, access to educational resources, protection from discrimination as well as violence against women, medical care, nutritional guidance and forced child marriage. In December 2011, the United Nations General Assembly adopted Resolution 66170, declaring October 11th as the International Day of the Girl and recognizing the rights of girls and the unique challenges facing girls globally. The International Day of the Girl encourages the empowerment of girls and ensures the fundamental rights to freedom as well as protecting their human rights. It is believed that this level of support provided during their critical formative years guides our youth into their full untapped potential. With this movement highlighting the need for more equitable and prosperous future, spearheading our youth into being more empowered girls of today and groundbreaking leaders of tomorrow. In honor of International Day of the Girl, Columbus City Council and the Commission on Black Girls seeks to recognize the Brown Girls Mentoring Program for its offering of safe spaces, leadership development opportunities and educational workshops that empower Black girls to lead. With that, I'd like to welcome, and turn the podium over to Sherri Jones from the Department of Neighborhoods, as well as Jamie Blunt from the Brown Girls Mentoring to the podium for some brief remarks.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Harden, Favor, fellow councilmembers. Hi, my name is Jamie Blunt, and I am the founder and CEO of Brown Girls Mentoring. Thank you, Councilmember Lourdes and Favor, for believing and supporting the work of Brown and Black girls. Council President Harden and Councilmember Bangston, thank you for taking the lead to initiate- initiative to be advocates for Black and Brown girls as well. As you all know, with this community work, we cannot do this alone. I would like to take a moment and say thank you to my husband and my kids, who give of me so graciously and believe in the work and mission and vision, excuse me, of Brown Girls Mentoring. Thank you to our leadership team, our board members and volunteers, and we definitely couldn't do it without the families and the girls that we serve. Thank you for entrusting us with your prized possessions. We do not take that responsibility lightly. Brown Girls Mentoring was established in 2016 to provide a safe space for girls of color, to thrive, grow, and connect in their communities. Being a Brown girl myself and a 16-year-old mom, I understand and believe all too well the power of good mentorship. It helped me heal from my own traumatic life experiences. This is the why, this is our why at Brown Girls Mentoring, to empower these incredible young ladies, grades K through eighth, and I am thankful for the Commission on Black Girls as well as City Council for your support. We have been able to serve over 300 girls over the course of seven years. Our pillars are founded off of self-acceptance, self-awareness, excuse me, self-awareness, resiliency mindset, character development, and sisterhood. Brown Girls, we, excuse me, Brown Girls Mentoring is equipping our girls with the essential social and emotional skills, preparing them to become the future leaders of their generation. And again, thank you for honoring our work with Brown girls in our community as you recognize the international girl of the day.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for the work that you all do every single day to serve our young girls, young women in our community. I know Councilmember Barosa de Padilla and myself, we have a jam-packed day of events dedicated to uplifting and honoring and celebrating young women all across this city, and I am so incredibly excited that you all will be engaging in those festivities as well. So please continue to do the great work that you all are doing, and we will continue to be supportive of that as well. Councilmember, do you have anything additional you'd add at this time?
I just echo the thank you, and I just also want to say thank you for bringing your girls into council chambers, because every time that we can role model and create spaces where this is the norm for our girls and that these spaces are created for them as well, and they feel comfortable being in these spaces is critically important. And so thank you for always being a good partner in empowering our girls and showing them that they do have the power to create change, that they do have a voice, and that true sisterhood. Really seeing your sister and empowering your sister and supporting your sister is how we will all thrive and prosper together. So, thank you.
Well, with that, I will move for adoption.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance Faber, Remy President Harden.
Not going to lie, Brown Girls Mentoring has some of the best swag as well, if you ever get to go to an event.
I know, we need to invest in those t-shirts.
Right, right. Thank you, Council President Harden. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. First, I'd like to remind folks that Council President Harden and I are hosting our next Public Safety Committee hearing tomorrow, Tuesday, October 10th, at 4:00 p.m. here in council chambers. This hearing will focus on Columbus's violence prevention and reduction programs, including presentations from the Office of Violence Prevention, the CPD Dialogue Team, Columbus Violence Reduction, and more. Public testimony is welcome and must be submitted to my legislative assistant, Kalen Pittman, by noon tomorrow. You can reach her at CDPittman@columbus.gov. That's C-D-P-I-T-T-M-A-N@columbus.gov. Next, I'd like to invite up Assistant Chief David Ball to and other guests from the Division of Fire to the podium as I read Resolution 189X-2023 to recognize and designate October 8th through the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Columbus, Ohio. The City of Columbus is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Columbus. Fire is a serious public health concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. This year's Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Home fires kill more than 2,800 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments of the United States responded to 338,000 home fires, and cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States. Columbus residents should turn pot handles toward the back of the stove, always keep a lid nearby when cooking, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around the stove, oven, and other things that could get hot, watch what they eat, and set a timer to remind them that they are cooking. Be it resolved by the City of Columbus, this council, the City of Columbus, that the council does hereby recognize and designate October 8th through the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and urges all residents of Columbus to check their kitchens for fire hazards, use safe cooking practices, and to support the many public safety efforts of the Columbus Division of Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2023. Thank you so much, Assistant Chief David Ball and from the Division of Fire for joining us. So I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Council President Harden, Councilmember Remy, other members of City Council. I am Assistant Chief David Ball, and on behalf of Fire Chief Jeffrey Happ, thank you for recognizing Fire Prevention Week. Each year, the NFPA identifies the theme for Fire Prevention Week. This year's theme is Cooking Safety. Nationally, cooking fires are the leading cause of fires in homes. In Columbus, cooking fires generate a large percentage as well. Smaller cooking fires are incidents that don't get out of control but do require a fire department response. Since 2020, CFD has responded to over 800 of those types of incidents. During 2022 and 2023, CFD responded to over 80 more serious cooking fires that have extended beyond the cooking container, taking one person's life, injuring 15 persons, and causing more than $1.6 million in property damage. Following our cooking safety measures that support this year's theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. Always keep a close eye on what you're cooking. For foods with longer cooking times, such as those that are simmering or baking, set a timer to help monitor them carefully. Clear the cooking area of combustible items and keep anything that can burn, such as dish towels, oven mitts, food packaging, and paper towels out of the area. Turn pot handles towards the back of the stove, keep a lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. Create a kid- and pet-free zone of at least three feet around the cooking area and anywhere else hot food or drink is prepared or carried. Stay in the kitchen, use a timer, avoid distractions that remove your focus from what's on the stove are just some of the key messages for this year's Fire Prevention Week campaign. The Columbus Division of Fire will be sponsoring an open house at all Columbus fire stations on Saturday, October 14th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Please join us at your local fire station, and the doors will be open for you to visit. And last, if you need a smoke detector, we partner with the American Red Cross to install smoke detectors in the community. Since 2013, since we began this program, we've installed almost 25,000 smoke detectors in the City of Columbus. You can request and install with the smoke detector hotline at 614-724-0935. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Assistant Chief. As a child, as an elementary school student who remembers vividly when our babysitter caught the kitchen on fire, I can remember it. I can't remember a lot of things, but I can certainly remember that as clear as day. And so very important topic this year, and certainly one that we hope everybody heeds. Thank you all for your coming down this evening. We appreciate your service for the City of Columbus. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance Faber, Remy President Harden.
And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. I want to start with my announcements by acknowledging and saying that this council stands with our Jewish community here in Columbus after the attacks on Israel this weekend. As we speak, the Columbus community is gathering to hold vigil with our community, and we just pray for peace, pray for peace, and really mourn all the civilian lives that have happened over the weekend, and pray for peace going forward. I also want to recognize that we are quickly approaching Election Day. In fact, tomorrow is the last day that you can register to vote in this important election this year, so I want to encourage folks to get out and vote, but also to get registered tomorrow if you are not. That means if you changed houses, moved over the last year or so, please check your voting location, make sure that you're registered and good to go. There are several big Columbus-focused issues on the ballot. The mayor's office, council is reorganizing this cycle, so there will be a lot of changes there. There are also issues, one, two, levy, school levies and the library levies are also on the ballot, so many, many reasons to make sure you are registered and get out to vote. And then I also, lastly, wanted to recognize that our own Director, Vrini De Reese, was recently elected as a Fellow of the American Academy of Park and Recreation Administration. We have a world-class rec in Parks Department, and we're so grateful for her leadership. So congratulations, Director. With that, are there any comments or questions from our election officials? All right. Are there any requests by a member of council for removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation?
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance Faber, Remy President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinance 2661-2023. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 2601 and 2663-2023. Education Committee, ordinance 2002-2023. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance 2391-2023. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 2651-2023. Finance Committee, ordinance 2669-2682-2023. And Zoning Committee, ordinances 2697 and 2732-2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any speakers on the first reading. The following ordinance on our agenda appear as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolution of expression 197X-2023. Economic Development Committee, ordinances 2524, 2616, 2617, 2619-2023. Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinances 2637, 2650, 2653-2023. Technology Committee, ordinances 2596, 2687-2023. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 180X-2023, and ordinances 2379, 2504, 2529, 2580, 2607, 2608, 2618, 2621, 2646, 2648, and 2665-2023. Neighborhoods and Immigrant Refugee and Migrant Affairs Committee, ordinances 2540, 2603, 2683, 2801-2023. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinances 2101, 2373, 2463, 2464, 2468, 2565, 2567, 2568, 2571, 2572, 2573-2023. Public Utilities, Resolution 165X-2023, and ordinances 2331, 2438, 2474, 2532, 2549, 2550, 2552, 2557, 2659-2023. Housing Committee, ordinances 1106, 2226, 2501-2023. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinances 2569 and 2589-2023. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinances 2325, 2426, 2528, 2587, 2638, 2649, 2652, 2674, 2680, 2681-2023. Public Safety Committee, ordinances 2574, 2584, 2631, 2633, 2685, 2698-2023. Administration Committee, ordinance 2738-2023. Finance Committee, ordinances 2380, 2383, 2451, 2494, 2534, 2592, 2594, 2598, 2624, 2628, and 2634-2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have several speakers on the consent portion of the agenda. Both ordinances, 2617 and 2619, deal with the potential annexation with Norwich Township annexation. So what I'm going to do is ask, I will have each one of those speakers on both 2619 and 2617 speak, and then I'll ask for someone from the department to respond, as this is a pretty routine piece of legislation that we're moving forward, but I understand all the advocacy specific to the legislation and what comes next. So with that, we have Brian Hunt speaking on ordinance 2617. Mr. Hunt, welcome to council. Just reminding folks that you have three minutes to speak, and if you represent any organization, we ask that you let us know, but welcome to council.
Good evening, council. My name is Brian Hunt, appearing as legal counsel for Scioto Property Owners Collective, otherwise known as Spock. Spock was formed to represent citizens of Columbus and other jurisdictions and to be a mechanism for discussion, collaboration, and community action to preserve and enhance the inner ring of the Scioto region. We are here this evening because of the impact that this decision will have on that part of the community. Now, the issue before council tonight may be limited to whether to annex territory into the city, but it is indisputable that this decision is but a step in a larger process intended to redevelop this land into something much more intense than there is today. Specifically, the developer seeks to turn the property into a 232-unit multifamily housing development consisting of 19 multi-story buildings, among other things. This will cause the density in the area to swell from roughly .2 dwelling units per acre to approximately 15.77 dwelling units per acre, an increase of 7,785%. With that in mind, there are three points that are important for this council to consider as it makes its decision tonight, as well as any decisions related to this development which may come before it in the future. The first point is that council has a duty to make decisions that are not arbitrary or unreasonable. In other words, your decisions must be rational, grounded in a reasonable basis, and make good sense. Any decisions that would, among other things, place families with children along an incredibly busy road without any sidewalks or public transportation and allow almost 20 multi-level buildings in an area comprised entirely of single-family homes cannot be defended as rational, reasonable, or making good sense. The second point is that council also has a duty to act in accordance with the public good. What constitutes the public good is often up for debate, but here we can look to the C2P2 guidelines to see what Columbus views as the public good in terms of development. They say, among other things, that development should improve residents' quality of life. Development should have connectivity, and established neighborhoods should be enhanced with high-quality and appropriate infill development. The development that has been proposed for this site currently falls short on each of those standards and other standards that would constitute the public good. As for the third point, the preamble to the city's charter states in part that we, the people of the City of Columbus, do enact and ordain this charter. Section 1 of the charter states, "The inhabitants of the City of Columbus shall continue to be a body politic incorporated by name the City of Columbus." In other words, the City of Columbus is not founded on land or buildings. It is founded on the people that live in the city. Many people who live in Columbus today and have lived here for five, 10, 15, or 30 years do not feel like their voices are being heard when it comes to these types of decisions. They see their established neighborhoods being fundamentally altered under the guise that change is needed, and hey, sometimes that's hard, in order to promote the speculative interest of some future resident who may not even currently live in the city, as well as opportunistic developers. I challenge this council to truly listen to the concerns and views of the citizens and take them to heart. They have lived here, they have raised families here, and they have been a part of the city. They are Columbus, and they are the people that this council exists as. Thank you for your time and service. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hunt. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Hunt? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker to come before council is Stephen Bidlak. Welcome to council, sir. Just a reminder again, three minutes, and if you represent any organization, let us know, please.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Steve Bidlak, a city of Columbus resident, living at my current address for over 17 years. I am speaking today against ordinance 2617-2023, and also on behalf of the Scioto Property Owners Collective and my concerned neighborhood, the villages that Hayden Run. In February of this year, it was stunning for the first time to get a notification in the mail that the adjacent property to my backyard is being petitioned for annexation with the intent for high-density multifamily housing per the developer's plans, in an area where only established neighborhoods of single-family homes surround it on all sides. To date, it's also stunning to experience no say or standing in the matter as adjacent property owners and city of Columbus residents and taxpayers. Why even notify us, then? The process seems to just keep moving along. The developer of these properties petitioning for annexation has demonstrated little to no interest in making meaningful changes to consider our personal needs and the investment we've made in our properties for decades. Very, very disheartening. My neighbors and I ask for your help if this development should proceed to the zoning phase. We want a more reasonable setback than the proposed 25-feet proper fencing and buffer built around this development to maintain our privacy and protect our property values as city of Columbus residents and taxpayers. I'm concerned about my family's and our neighborhood's future quality of life. How will the developer handle the management of dirt, dust, and noise while construction occurs? Many people now work from their homes during the day, just like myself. Then, most importantly, how about the long-term impacts? The proposed high-density multifamily housing is not appropriate for this area. A density which is more appropriate could mitigate the environmental and safety concerns which the current proposal raises. If this annexation is approved, this first-time developer's potential missteps become not only my problem, but the city's problem, and this city council's challenge to help resolve. Since February, there have been many stressful days and sleepless nights over all these unknowns. Please help us ensure whatever happens with these properties up for an annexation vote, that the future development is responsible, compatible, and appropriate. We're counting on you, our city council members, to protect our human interests, as well as our potential new neighbors' interests who would occupy these proposed high-density apartments. Thank you for your time and willingness to listen.
Thank you, Mr. Bidlak. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Bidlak? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker to come before council is Mr. Ben Pfeffler. Welcome to council, sir.
Thank you, President Harden. Good evening, President Harden, members of council. My name is Ben Pfeffler. Nobody gets my last name correct.
I am so sorry.
First of all, I want to thank council for the opportunity to speak. I am speaking, I'm here on behalf of Spock. I'm also speaking as a former National Environmental Practice Group leader for a national law firm with significant Columbus presence, and I'm also a resident and the HOA president of an area to the south of the proposed development. So I have both a personal and a professional interest in the proposed development. I'm not here to repeat the evident shortcomings of the proposed development, which have been recited multiple times, nor am I here to speak to the city's need for expanded housing, which is also a need. I think those items are better addressed by others. I'm rather here to identify issues that the city should consider before bringing this property within its jurisdiction. As I found during my profession, during my 40 years of practice, details do matter. And I've identified a few key details which are important to the city of Columbus policy. One, I believe, a question that council should ask is, will the property support a sustainable community for the city? Density is obviously an important issue. As detailed previously, there's going to be significant traffic flow, pedestrian, and cyclist activity along Dublin Road. There's also some issues associated with sewer loading, with the density of this particular proposed complex, which is near-adjacent to the Scioto River. I would ask the council to have its engineers look at this closely before the property is accepted into annexation, evaluate the combined sanitary and stormwater issues, as this is a real issue to be developed. I'm sure members of the city council are well aware that many years ago, Ohio EPA was actively involved in working with the city of Columbus and the satellite communities on this issue, an issue which I was also very actively involved. This eco-sensitive area needs special attention. As I mentioned, the river is a particularly sensitive area. There is a rule of what we call unintended consequences on any type of project that we talk about in grand, in the grand scheme of things. And one classic example, which happened in the area just a few years ago, when a large box store was developed on Truman Boulevard, just to the west of the proposed development, there was a large stormwater runoff, the way it was developed, it did not have adequate stormwater runoff, and it resulted in substantial sanitary sewer backups in the basements of many, many homes immediately to the east. This is just an example of the rule of unintended consequences, that any rush to approve a development, you really, the details matter, and the details need to be addressed. I would also ask council to have its experts evaluate the potential for stormwater runoff. We have a significant issue on the impact of downgradient and crossgradient properties, particularly as the flow is towards the river, which is immediately on the other side of Dublin Road. These are just a few of the environmental issues that I have flagged that I would ask council to look at before it takes this property into its jurisdiction. This is, there are significant issues of this issue, of this project in this unique location, and I would ask council to evaluate it carefully. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you.
The next speaker to come for council is Mr. Glenn Taylor, speaking on ordinance 2619.
Good evening, Mr. President and council members. My name is Glenn Taylor, and I'm a 20-year resident of this area. You have heard from my colleagues, President Hollingsworth and Vice President Miller, in the past. As executive director of Spock, I am also here this evening opposing the rezoning of the properties within the Dublin Road corridor. After four decades of public service, majoring in public safety, I have a deep safety concern regarding the location which the developers are proposing to build multi-unit apartments. Each one of you should be familiar with this area as presented to you, and know that Dublin Road in this area has three lanes of traffic. One continuous lane in either direction with a middle turn lane. Dublin Road west of the river is heavily traveled, is a heavily traveled roadway, excuse me, with traffic consistently exceeding the maximum 45 mile-an-hour speed limit. The proposed development site sits in the middle of five jurisdictions: Franklin County, Dublin, Hilliard, City of Columbus, and Norwich Township. The site lacks infrastructure such as sidewalks for pedestrian traffic, bicycle paths, and most importantly, no public transportation. Additionally, the closest grocery store and/or shop any is more than a mile away. With Dublin, Hilliard, and Norwich Township in opposition as well on these types of developments, who will be responsible for the safety concerns in this area? When Spock met with the builders months ago, these concerns were not answered, and to this day, there has been no communication addressing the need for any of these safety concerns. I understand that as long as all the boxes are checked for council, then in most cases, there's been an approval. Mr. President and council members, I am here this evening to tell you that all the boxes have not been checked. The Spock membership has not had an opportunity to review the proposal concerns for safety. I believe that communication is key and critical as civic leaders and individuals. As the chair of the Franklin County Rural Zoning Committee, one of the most important questions I ask in every case that comes before me, did you communicate with your neighbors? This is vital. I believe that communication was vital, and we must do that. Mr. President, I am asking this council to take a pause and give this association the opportunity to review all plans for this annexation, as well as all parties involved, and sit down and address these concerns. Mr. President, what's the hurry? The land will always be there, long after we're gone, and most of you are up for reelection this year. We support you. We want you to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments, Mr. Taylor? Thank you, sir. Next speaker to come before council is Dennis Bousser.
Thank you, members of council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My speech is going to change a little bit, I think, because of a lot of things that I wanted to express or already expressed. I think some of these are going to be redundant, what you've already heard, but our voices are the same, and our voices are pretty much united in just the responsible development within Columbus. I want to express it's not about preventing development, it's about responsible, compatible, and appropriate development. The potential issues I'd like the Columbus City Council to consider that would be impacted by this ordinance and the associated variances that will come after are potential impacts in ecological nature, damage to adjacent housings during construction, privacy concerns, stormwater drainage, archaeological significance, and traffic and public safety, which you just heard quite a bit about. For ecological impacts, currently, there's a large vegetative buffer that surrounds this property of mature trees and vegetation that serves as a corridor for a lot of the wildlife and critters in the area, including at least two species of bats, three species of owl, foxes, and deer that call this home. This area is connected safe zone for their movement to navigate through the community, so they aren't run over by the increased traffic that is coming. Damage to adjacent houses during construction, the bedrock is very shallow, it's less than three feet below the land surface, so I'd like to know how we'd be protected from damage caused during the footer blasting and construction that is due, that is going to happen when they have to put in subgrade infrastructure and build the homes for this three- and four-story multi-level housing. The solution for that is a larger setback and buffer zone to protect the surrounding community, which I don't think is considered in a lot of this development that's being proposed around Columbus. Privacy concerns, including these elevated balconies that weren't out there before, these people will be peering down into our properties, and again, a better setback in preserving that vegetative buffer is better for the community, for those future residents, and better for the existing property owners. Stormwater drainage, the current plan as we've seen it, which was also communicated, we haven't had a lot of input into that, places at least one apartment building directly on top of a surface drainage on the north side of the property, which extends into and through my property and other adjacent properties. Water will back up onto my property and cause flooding. Many acres of land are being paved for parking and streets and are under roof, turning pervious land into impervious surfaces, excuse me. The solution, a better and wider setback, which also increases the pervious areas, stormwater management plan for the property, and lower in a more practical housing density. An archaeological significance that hasn't been mentioned to date in anything I've seen is there are earthen mounds of possible Native American origin that would need to be investigated and are preserved. Those happen to also be within the buffer area that could be increased to preserve those potential treasures. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you, sir. The last speaker to speak on this annexation is Ann Heston. Heston, welcome to council.
Good evening. I am here on behalf of Spock, and of course, as a city of Columbus resident. I have been in this community since 1975. I was five years old, 48 years that my family's been a part of this community, and we've seen the growth, and we have embraced it. I mean, when you look, you've got four churches, you know, two schools, we've embraced it. Even when Duffy Homes, a very reputable builder, built Stonewick Manor subdivision that butts up to our property, and of course, unforeseen, we lost our well. Our well dried up and was ruined. This will happen. This can happen. It did happen. My parents were offered to Duffy to buy our property, they said no. They've, we've had offers to buy our property so people can develop on this corner. We've said no, because we want to keep it this way. We want to keep it the community that we're used to. We want to embrace the change, but we want it to be done in the right way. There's something very suspect about the way this whole thing has come about. The safety of Dublin Road between Fishing Road and between Hayden Run is already a concern with, it's a 45 mile-an-hour speed limit. At any given time, you've got cars going 50, 60, 70, 80 miles an hour on a Friday and Saturday night, but because we fall in those county, Dublin, Hilliard, Columbus, there's no real patrolling of that, and then to add to that is, it just doesn't seem like this is a good plan. We need to come up with a better plan, which we could embrace and we could be on board with if we really knew what it was going to be. I think that being a part of this community my entire life, seeing the growth, I can't even walk across my street without being concerned today. It takes me 10 to 15 minutes to get out of my driveway because of the already traffic. You have two ways across to cross the river. Fishing Road and Hayden Run is a disaster. Still, I mean, so to add to this, it just doesn't make sense to that extent. Let's come up with a better plan. I urge you to really look at this. You know, our police officers are already stretched thin. We're kind of in that pocket where you don't want to call them because somebody's going 80 miles an hour, because they're over here dealing with, you know, real things that are, you know, the shootings that are happening. So I really urge you to look at that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Heston. Are there any questions or comments? This is, I was going to ask, I'm going to ask someone from the Department of Development to speak, and because, but thank you, Ms. Heston. I don't think anyone has any questions. You know, tonight, with these two ordinances are an annexation, and what a lot of what I heard friends and advocates speak on tonight is probably future actions pertaining to zoning. That's not what we are necessarily considering here. So I wanted to ask Director Fennig to speak on the legislation that's in front of us tonight, see if any council members have any rebuttals or anything to add. Director?
Yeah. Good evening, council, President Harden, and members of council. Council President, you mentioned that this is a pretty routine piece of legislation, and I know you all know this process well, but it does seem worth outlining tonight. In July, this annexation proposal was approved by the Franklin County Commissioners in acknowledgement that it follows the requirements set forth by the Ohio Revised Code. After clearing its 60-day waiting period, the annexation is now before you at council. What's important to understand is that this, tonight's legislation, should council move to accept the annexation, does not endorse any proposed development to occur, nor does it guarantee a rezoning application will be approved. Annexation and rezoning are two separate processes. Should this annexation be authorized tonight, the parcel will automatically be assigned our zoning. Any changes to the zoning would need to go through the rezoning process, which, as you all know, entails robust opportunity for public engagement and comment, and evaluation by applicable area commissions and design commissions. Finally, the rezoning would be subject to approval by council itself. subject to approval by council itself. To repeat, tonight's action does not approve or endorse any future development. It solely serves to annex the parcel of land.
Thank you so much, Director. I know Councilmember Dorance, Chair of Zoning, wanted to speak on this piece of legislation.
Yep. Thank you, Council President. So as just outlined by the Director, this is a nod, we don't have a rezoning before this. Typically, just to clarify for any members of the public that are here that are interested. So I chair the zoning committee. After an application is filed, that application moves through a variety of different city departments for approval necessary to come before this body. That certainly includes from the Department of Public Utilities, looking at whether or not there can be stormwater, drainage, implementation to keep the development at pre-development levels for purposes of flooding on the property. Our Division, or Department of Public Service evaluates the project from a traffic management standpoint. There are a number of different aspects to any project before it comes before the body for us to take a vote on whether or not there needs to be modifications changed to any proposal. Additionally, it's been my longstanding practice to meet with neighbors as things move through the development process, to also talk with an applicant about particularly areas of concern regarding that project. I would imagine this project will be very similar to that. So certainly happy to meet with folks in the community on this. And it's very, very important to think through, this is something, again, the legislation that is before us tonight is very routine. Rezonings take weeks, if not months, to come before this body, and certainly each individual council member are intimately involved with their decision on whether to approve a project or not, and certainly to ask for modifications to a project additionally. It seems a bit prophetic we're here tonight when we're talking about our zoning process is being reformed, and one of the reasons for that is certainly housing, and certainly any project that brings new housing to the city is something that we evaluate as it pertains to the area that it's in, and certainly the need overall for the body itself. So certainly appreciate the advocacy from folks here tonight, but certainly we are a long way away from anything coming for this body for a vote on this project, and I would anticipate any proposals that have been shared with the community at this point by an applicant will look significantly different by the time it comes before the body. That happens in probably 95% of the time as these things move through the city departments, and certainly come before this body. So again, appreciate the folks coming down here tonight on this particular piece of legislation, but again, there is significant work to go before any rezoning or variance will be granted on this site by this body in the future.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions or comments on these two ordinances? We have two more speakers on consent agenda, and then we will break for zoning. Mr. Hanif Mohammed. Welcome back to council, sir.
Hey, nice to see you all again. Nice to see you all again. This the non-agenda one, or this is the one where I speak on?
You're signed up for right now to speak on 1106 and housing.
Okay. All right. You going to speak with me? All right. Let's go. Okay, I'm ready. First off, I'd like to say, good evening, city council. You guys look wonderful. This is a wonderful setting. I love the lighting in this mug. I was looking at the ceiling. I was trying to figure out where a type of ceiling that could come from. I'm just fascinated with the things that go on down here. So I'd like to just say hello. I want to commend you all for the work that you all doing in the community and speaking on this agenda. I know you're building six houses with the help of Habitat for Community. I would like to say that after Touchstone was built in Southfield, it motivated me to come down here and to find out how things work, because I was kind of disappointed that that had happened, especially next to the daycare. But I now realize that the council president, like that you have a lot of tough decisions to make, and when I seen this in there, I'm like, oh, my gosh, like, these guys are really trying to just put people in houses. But this ordinance does show that you guys are dedicated to working with the community to make this a better place, not just for, you know, just for everybody, whether you brown, black, white, or whatever it is like that. So I would like to, first off, give you guys a round of applause and hats off for doing that. I don't know if anybody going to clap with me, but I really appreciate you guys. So, you know, that's just from where I come from. And I'm excited to see what becomes of these houses and the different properties that are in the possession in Columbus, Ohio. And it's my suggestion that some of these houses be used for, like, single-parent men or women, you know, alike, but I know my suggestions. It's just my suggestion, but it ain't really nothing. But either way, I want to let my compadre come up here and get an experience with speaking about some of the issues that he see in housing and stuff like that. So this is really his moment. So go ahead.
Columbus, Ohio is a good city, but there is some changes that need to be made. Even though Columbus, Ohio is one of the best cities in 2016, it is also a low crime rate. Did you also know it is also 1,912 unhousehold people in Columbus, Ohio, but something many other people think that Columbus, Ohio needs to fix. From the Google complaints, it's homeless drug addicts on this freeway access, and on the side of the grocery stores, and they also sleep in front of the stores, and these things I will recommend fixing to make Columbus, Ohio a better place.
Thank you. I really thank you for that. That's just his opinion. I didn't write none of that. We ride around the city every day, and we take a look at different things. So we really passionate about this housing thing and stuff like that. Is there anything else you want to say to the council?
No.
Okay. Well, there's nothing else we want to say, and I guess that's my time, and thank you guys for having us, and you know, you can have a, well, no, I'll be back up. I'm coming back. I got something else to say.
Thank you, sir, and thank you both for your advocacy. We actually really look forward to passing 1106, supporting Habitat for Humanities pieces moving forward tonight. The final speaker on consent is Mr. Nate Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins?
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Lothan George Wilkins. I'm going to speak in against the six properties you had on Genesee and Minnesota Avenue. And the reason why I'm opposed of this is because into Northland, and I watched several properties that came down on Genesee Avenue, and on Arlington Avenue and beyond. So beginning with the property of 1388, the same property owner that had it for several years had 1638 of Genesee Avenue. I believe that property was owned out of Euclid, Ohio at that time. I believe Habitat is getting several properties on Genesee Avenue. But again, the reason why I'm opposed of this is because we are talking about the mental health, the drug addiction, where we want some of these homes to be analyzed for them, and to get back on their feet and give them sustainability of jobs. I had watching a house got burnt and torched several years ago, 1457 of Genesee Avenue. Genesee Avenue was occupied house at a time before the property got torn down, and today it sits as vacant land. To my knowledge, I know Habitat's coming in and rebuilding. I'm all for Habitat building homes in the area, but want these homes to be used for people getting off of drugs, getting out of drug addiction community centers, and getting their own place. There has been several properties down on Genesee that's been hoarded into the land bank for quite some time to be purchased by Habitat Humanity. I don't have a problem with Habitat Humanity, but we want to do something that's different, more entity, to bring in people off of drugs, cocaine, drug paraphernalia, whatever medication may be, and also multi-disability people. But it's not the time to give Habitat all these empty lots. Let's give it to another entity to give those people hope and prosperity. We talk about human trafficking with young women. We want something said aside for those people, and it seems like those people are being left out, multi-disability, visually impaired, multi-handicapped, and also, all this stuff has got to be tied together. Last week, I was proposed the same properties again, but if Habitat can use two or three of these properties for drug addiction homes, several homes for these people, I'd like to see that in my community, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilkins, and we want to make sure, last time we spoke, that you were able to connect with Habitat and make sure advocacy clear to their leadership, but I appreciate you, sir. Are there any other questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Here none. Is there motion to approve? Please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harding.
Consent agenda is approved. Is there motion to recess? Please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harding.
We'll reconvene in five minutes for zoning.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich from the Department of Building and Zoning Services has been sworn in. First, we have ordinance 2677-2023 to rezone 1215 West Mound Street being 47.16-plus acres located in the south side of West Mound Street at the terminus of South Glenwood Avenue from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The site consists of one parcel formerly developed with Cooper Stadium that was planned for an automobile research facility and racetrack. The rezoning will instead allow a mixed-use development for a potential future development. The applicant is Spark Holdings LLC, care of Jeff Brown, attorney. They have the full approval from city departments, the Development Commission, and the Southwest Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments?
Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we move into the council variances. First, we have ordinance 2678-2023, granted variance and provisions of Section 3356.03(c)(4) permitted uses, 3361.02 permitted uses, and 3312.49(c), minimum number of parking spaces required for the Columbus City Code to property located at 1215 West Mound Street to allow for ground for residential use and limited manufacturing uses and reduce parking requirements for the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. This is companion variance related to the rezoning we just approved. Approval of this request will allow a long vacant site to be replaced with mixed use that are consistent with land use recommendations of the Southwest Area Plan. The applicant is Spark Holdings LLC, care of Jeff Brown, attorney. They have full approvals from city departments and the Southwest Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. And next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next move to amend, estimate, or clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Amend it.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2690-2023 to grant a variance provisions of Section 3332.38h, private garage to 3321.05b1in2, 3332.22, minimum building lines on corner lots, 3332.25, maximum side yard required, 3332.26, minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.38g, private garage to the Columbus City Code to property located at 963 Linwood Avenue to allow habitable space above detached garage to reduce development standards in the R2F residential district. The applicant is David Betts, requests a council variance to permit the construction of a habitable space above an existing detached garage. Council variance is necessary because the current zoning code only permits habitable space above a garage when connected directly to the habitable space in a dwelling. This request has approval from city departments and the south side area commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. And next move to adopt the finance of staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Council President, that's all we have in tonight's zoning agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing no further business coming for council, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Adjourn. Meeting number forty-eight. Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
We are back in meeting number forty-eight. The first committee to come before council is a small and minority business committee chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight in the small minority business committee, for second reading, we just have one ordinance to authorize the Director of Department of Development to approve the East Main Street Special Improvement District Revised Plan of Service. There have been preliminary conversations with the city of Whitehall in which they have agreed to coordinate development and services along the Main Street corridor with East Main Street SID and the city of Bexley. The cooperation of our three municipalities along East Main Street represents a practical demonstration of Columbus's regional approach to providing for additional housing, planning for transit, and working to improve commercial corridors to improve the lives of residents and small businesses within the Columbus region. The recent annexation of three parcels by the city of Whitehall for a housing development with an affordable housing component has impacted the operations of the East Main Street Special Improvements District. These changes have opened the door to conversations on ways to strengthen support of the work being done by the East Main Street SID in partnership with the city of Bexley and the city of Whitehall. I would like to kick it over to Deputy Director Jennifer Finning, who is here with us to provide additional context, but we thought it was fitting to uplift this as an example of how regional partners can actually come together and collaborate to tackle our region's growth and also to tackle that in a way that enhances a corridor and strengthens all communities that are involved. With that, Deputy Director Finning, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yes, excuse me. From a practical standpoint, a SID cannot span two municipalities, and in this case, three parcels would need to be removed from the SID, so this legislation helps take care of that. But to echo your sentiment, you know, when we talk about the Columbus Housing Strategy, it's a regional strategy, and we need all partners throughout the city, all municipalities, to lean in to help create the housing that we so desperately need throughout the region so that we can maintain our affordability and our competitive advantage in the region. Doing this, supporting housing in Whitehall, helps to fulfill that purpose.
Thank you again for that. Also with us tonight, we have one of those small business owners that will be impacted but also have seen the changes that have happened on East Main Street. We have the East Main Street Special Improvements District is Ms. Shannon Parsons is the chairperson, and I believe she's still here. Awesome. And thank you, Madam Chairperson, for sticking in there with us and rearranging. I know you had to rearrange your schedule to be here, but I want to make sure that your voice is heard.
Thank you for having me. I'm Dr. Sharon Parsons. I'm chair of the East Main Street Special Improvement District. We are the strip on East Main Street between Bexley and Whitehall, and unfortunately, we don't look like either one. It is our goal to make this area more clean, more safe. Unfortunately, our base, or, you know, we get assessments from property tax, and we don't have any large valuable properties like a lot of the other SIDS, so we operate on a very small budget, about $60,000 a year. We get maybe $5,000 to $6,000 from Bexley. That money we use to pay special duty police officers, the community crime patrol, we pay people to pick up litter. We're all volunteers. So I come here tonight and wait for a long time to speak because we want you to see us. We want you to know who we are. We want you to remember that we're there, and we would be happy to receive any help that you could send our way. We don't have any city planners. Like I said, we have no employees, so we really could use some help if anyone could see their way to advise us, to help us. We're ripe to be improved, and we're working very hard to try to make that happen. So I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Again, Dr. Parsons, thank you for your patience, but also thank you for your leadership, for raising your hand, as you said, to volunteer to lead this effort because you're vested in that community and your business, but also invested in the future direction of that community. And I think tonight, what this piece of legislation showcases is there's two ways for us to tackle this growth. There's ways of resistance and thinking of keeping our neighborhoods the same, or there's ways for us to come together collaboratively to talk about what can be done to ensure that that growth is not necessarily a pain point for our community, but is a opportunity for us to grow and for us to be better for our region. So thank you again for your leadership, and thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome. This was started by Mr. Herb Talabair, and we really want to honor him and keep this going, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues?
I was like jumping out of...
Fellow insider here.
I know. I was like jumping out of my chair because this is right up the street from my house, and I know Herb, and we still have the street sign in his honor down the street. And so I just want to commend you and thank you for the work because it was because of the neighbors that Main Street looks the way that it does today. And so it is part, it has come a long way, but still has a long way to go, and there is so much opportunity along that strip. And so, again, I just want to commend you and say thank you for all of the work to quite literally make our neighborhood better, our neighborhood.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, ma'am. Move to the technology committee, please.
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in technology, we have ordinance 2555-2023 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Technology for the city Attorney's Office to establish a purchase order for the continued conversion of legal documents via backfile scanning and electronic signature processes capabilities with 3SG Plus LLC using a state term contract to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $300,000 from the Information Services Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. The city Attorney's Office requires the ability to automate processing and store information related to legal matters assigned to their office. These services will allow for the continuation of the conversion of legal documents via backfile scanning to assist with the process of modernization and converting to paperless case file storage. The cost associated with this agreement, as outlined, is $300,000 for a period of one year from the date of a confirmed purchase order by the Columbus City Auditor's Office. 3SG Plus is the current vendor working on the project to convert hard copied documents to digital, so it is in the city's best interest to continue working with this current vendor via a waiver of competitive bidding. Emergency legislation is requested in order to minimize the potential disruption of the record digitization process. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, in technology, we have ordinance 2593-2023 to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to enter into a professional services agreement with OST Inc. for consulting services through the state of Ohio's Managed Services Provider Contract to authorize the extension of purchase order PO351084 for one year to make funds available through October 20th, 2024, to waive relevant sections of Columbus City Code pertaining to competitive bidding, to authorize the expenditure of $500,000 from the Information Services Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. Now, this contract and purchase order extension will provide for the continued short-term professional services to support the Department of Technology for operational needs for email authentication, excuse me, services, voice IP, business systems, analysts, program management, operating systems, GIS, boundary networking, storage, and databases. These services are necessary to ensure continuation of important services as the Department of Technology works to become fully staffed. Emergency action is requested as there is an immediate need for these services to ensure that there is no interruption in critical city operations, including email, voice IP, business systems, analytic program management, operating systems, GIS, and other related systems. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage at this time.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee chaired by President Pro Tim. President Pro Tim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. First, I have ordinance 2457-2023 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify the contract with Orcatus U.S. for the design of Parsons Avenue Water Plant Well Field Development Project to authorize an amendment to the 2023 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of funds and appropriation within the water bond fund to authorize the expenditure of up to $1 million, not here in $2,000, from the water bond fund to pay for the contract modification and declare an emergency. The Parsons Avenue Water Plant currently has six collector wells. This project provides engineering design and construction improvements for the seventh well, as well as additional raw water source for the water plant. This project is part of the city's ongoing program to upgrade the treatment facilities to provide safe, efficient, reliable, cost-effective operations for its approximately 1.2 million water customers. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 2481-2023 to authorize Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance to the appropriate current impending term contract purchase agreements to the purchase of water treatment chemicals for the Division of Water, Department of Public Utilities, to authorize the transfer of $4,300,000 between object classes and the Water Operating Fund to authorize expenditure of $7,200,000 from the Water Operating Fund and declare an emergency. This will allow the Division of Water to continue to provide safe, reliable drinking water to citizens of Columbus and surrounding communities. Emergency designation is requested to avoid the delay of purchasing chemicals necessary for the water treatment process. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committees tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize, I skipped a couple really important committees. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Barosa De Padilla.
We're just keeping folks on their toes this evening, that's all. I have two ordinances this evening in public service and transportation. Director, I am going to give you the heads up because I'm going to come to you for just a quick question on these ordinances. 2615-2023, this ordinance authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into agreements with and to provide funding to the Ohio Department of Transportation or ODOT for the FRA 7012.68 Project PID 77372, located within the corporate limits of the city of Columbus. The aforementioned effort encompasses various improvements to the I-70, to I-70 from its eastern confluence with I-71 to the Grant Avenue Bridge, and improvements to the ancillary streets and intersections, including construction of bridge caps on Bridge Number FRA 7145C or the South High Street over 7071. All of these bridges will be over 7071. And Bridge Number FRA 331747C, South Third Street, aesthetic improvements or enhancements to three bridges, FRA 701395C Front Street, FRA 701405C High Street, and FRA 231075C Fourth Street. So, Director, this is part of a larger project. Can you just remind folks about what we're doing around the 7071 knot?
Yes, so, Council President Harden, Council Chair Barosa De Padilla, and all other members of council, this is part of the larger 7071 project that goes along the south side of downtown and then the east side of downtown. Multiple aspects of this project have already been built. They're specifically right now working on the 7071 interchange on the east side of town, as well as kind of what we're calling the trench on the south side of town. This project specifically focuses on the bridges over the 7071 portion downtown. It's not just the bridges, it's also a lot of pedestrian and bicycle facilities, beautification, park-like settings, if you think about Long Street Bridge. They're not quite like that with the art, but definitely the landscaping and so forth. And then after this piece, we still will have the 71 that goes north on the east side, and then the 315 interchange, which is quite a ways out. But those are the pieces of the project that will still be left after this piece.
And I believe we just completed the Broad Street Bridge, is that correct?
Yes.
Which will be lit.
Which we actually have some really beautiful lighting that can do different, like decorating shows with lots of colors and so forth, and so we turned those lights on to white last week, and they are going to be tied into here at City Hall so different programs can be run on that bridge.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I know that it can be frustrating, especially right now with all of the construction. I remember a long time ago, when I was a kid, there was like so much construction that they were selling T-shirts about like we were Orange Barrel City, like with all the cones. So I know that we can get frustrated, but I also want to just give folks a periodic update of where we are with the improvements, and then also when we're at the completion, because as you're driving across the beautiful Broad Street Bridge and you see it lit up, that you can appreciate what is yet to come in the frustration of the now, while we are in the midst of the construction. So, do any of my colleagues have any questions or concerns, or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
I do not have renderings today, but next time, I promise I'll bring some more. Okay, our next ordinance is 2688-2023 to amend the 2023 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with, I think I'm going to mess this up, Butnus, that Pavement Systems LLC for the resurfacing 2023 Slurry Seal Crack Seal Project to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,413,623.57 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund Project and to declare an emergency. I believe I just saw trucks working on this today, so this is just to seal the cracks, correct, on our main roadways?
That is correct, and it allows our pavement to last much longer before we have to do a full-depth resurfacing.
Perfect, and this is two different strategies to do that?
Yes.
Great. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
And I meant to mention, this is 125 city streets for the crack ceiling, 153 for the slurry ceiling, and then this will start October 19th, but as I said, we already started seeing some of this happen already, so. May I move along to neighborhoods?
Sure.
And immigrant, migrant, refugee affairs? Thanks. We have one ordinance today, 2604-2023, to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with Image Character Etiquette Incorporated to support the International Day of the Girls Summit event, or Girls Can, to authorize an appropriation expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund and to declare an emergency. The Girls Will Summit will give girls the opportunity to use real-world examples to address gender inequalities and the impact that it has had on women. The day will include breakout sessions that will have the girls talk about the struggles that face them today. The summit will also provide the opportunities for girls to research, design, and present legislation to an issue that is impacting them with an invitation to the winner to present at City Council one day. We have a future City Council member, I believe it's going to come out of the summit. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
And that is all. I suggest neighborhoods.
Recreation and Parks.
Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
The next committee to come before council is the Recreation and Parks Committee chaired by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Can I pass it back to Director Roladess? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Tonight I have to-
What'd you do?
And I move for passage. Tonight I have ordinance 2570-2023 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to modify an existing contract with Arcadis US Inc. for the Big Walnut Trail, Little Turtle, Cherry Bottom Park, and Allen Creek Trail Project to authorize the transfer of $1,800,972.12 within the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund to authorize the amendment of 2023 capital improvements budget to authorize the expenditure again of $1,800,972.12 from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. In June of 2021, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, MORPC, approved 5.6 million in federal grant funding for the Recreation Parks Department towards the construction of this 2.5-mile section of trail in the city's northeast, a connection that will go from Little Turtle Neighborhood to Sunbury Road, Cherry Bottom Park, and Allen Creek Trail. As part of the grant funding, the Recreation Parks Department is obligated to perform a design of the project, and the ordinance be forced to modify the existing contract with Arcadis US Inc. achieves that goal. If there are no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Also, I have ordinance 2662-2023 to authorize the City Attorney to spend city funds to acquire and accept in good faith the real property consisting of approximately 58.422 acres of former rail corridor located on the city's northeast side to contract with Associated Professional Services in order to, for the Recreation and Parks Department to timely complete the acquisition of the property, to authorize the transfer of $52,000 within the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund, to authorize the amendment of the 2023 capital improvements budget, to authorize and expend up to $5 million from the Recreation and Parks Grand Fund 2283, and the Voted Bond Fund 7702, and to declare an emergency. The Recreation and Parks Department has successfully negotiated a purchase contract for the purchase of the real estate consisting of approximately 58.422 acres comprised of multiple parcels, including seven miles of the abandoned rail corridor from Windsor Park near 17th Avenue to Cooper Park in the northern community. The department now requests that the City Attorney's Real Estate Division acquire the real estate in good faith in contract for Associated Professional Services such as surveys, title work, appraisals, et cetera, as part of the closing so that the department can complete the acquisition of the real estate in a timely manner. This marks a critical step in actualizing the Linden Green Line Project, the creation of Central House, first new 58-acre linear park stretching along the seven miles that will provide our entire city access, and approximately 130,000 residents in the Linden and northern communities with space to enjoy the outdoors for generations to come. This evening, I have Ms. Turnage from the Recreation and Parks Department. If there are any questions, and if there are none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
And that's all I have, sir, and my microphone is still working, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Health and Human Services, we have ordinance 278-2023 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the COVID-19 Enhanced Operations Subgrant Program in the amount of $2,109,748 to authorize the appropriation of $2,109,748 to the Health Department with the Health Department Grants Fund to enter into a service contract with Imoka Mobile Health Incorporated for contact taste tracing services to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Chapter 329 of the Columbus City Codes to authorize the expenditure of $1,136,932 from the Health Department Grants Fund for said contract and to declare an emergency. Given the recent rise in cases within the city, this ordinance will help provide relief to Columbus public health as they continue their COVID-19 infection prevention and control activities, contract tracing, and vaccination efforts. This ordinance authorizes the Board of Health to enter into service contract with Imoka Mobile Health Incorporated for contract tracing services for infectious disease, including but not limited to COVID-19 and measles, in an amount not to exceed $1,136,932 for the period of time between August 1st, 2023 through July 31st, 2024. Are there any questions or concerns by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, that's all in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight I have two ordinances in public safety. The first ordinance is ordinance 2533-2023 to authorize the Director of Public Safety to enter into a contract with Celebrite to renew software licenses to extract evidence from cellular devices, to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes to authorize the expenditure of $193,586.64 from the Law Enforcement Seizure Fund and to declare an emergency. The Division of Police Digital Forensic Unit requests the continuation of current Celebrite software licenses to extract digital evidence from cellular phones to solve crimes. Many crimes have some link to digital evidence. Due to this fact, most divisional units are using the services of the Digital Forensic Unit to obtain evidence from cellular and other electronic devices. With this software, the Digital Forensics Unit obtains the ability to unlock and decrypt more phones and extract more evidence to solve crimes. This evidence includes accessing third-party apps, stored passwords and tokens, check conversations, location data, email attachments, system logs, deleted content, and much more. Director, could you speak to the fact that we're waiving competitive bidding on this particular ordinance?
Councilmember, this is simply a renewal of an existing contract for software that was previously bid. Therefore, for the sake of continuity, we would ask, seek a waiver.
Thank you very much, Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance 2575-2023 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a contract with Magnet Forensics to renew digital licenses and procure additional software licenses, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes to authorize the expenditure of $131,621.05 from the Law Enforcement Contraband Seizure Fund to transfers funds with the Law Enforcement Contraband Seizure Fund and to declare an emergency. The Division of Political, excuse me, the Division of Police Digital Forensic Unit needs to renew software licenses and procure additional software licenses to continue current day-to-day operations and increase efficiency and security in accessing, sharing, assigning, and working on data for cases. The Division needs to enter into contract with Magnet Forensics to renew and purchase these software licenses. The Division needs to transfer funds within the Law Enforcement Contraband Seizure Fund. Director, same thing?
Same thing.
Yeah, thank you so much. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
And that is all I have in public safety. With your permission, I'll move on to administration.
Please.
In tonight's administration ordinance, I have 2736-2023 to approve the Memorandum of Understanding 2023-05 executed between Representatives of the City of Columbus and Fraternal Order of Police, Capital City Lodge 9, which provides pay at double the straight-time hourly rate for police officers, police sergeants, and police lieutenants who work voluntarily scheduled overtime posted at 2023 special, city special operations as provided in the attachment here too, and to declare an emergency. Section 2.4, the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Columbus and Fraternal Order of Police, Capital City Lodge 9 dated December 9, 2020 through December 8, 2023, requires that any modifications to the agreement be agreed to by the parties in writing. Memorandum of Understanding 2023-05 temporarily amends Article 22 of the agreement by providing pay at double the straight-time hourly rate for police officer sergeants, police lieutenants who work voluntarily scheduled overtime posted as 2023 city special operations, beginning October 2, 2023 at 3:01 a.m. and lasting until December 31, 2023 at 11:59 p.m. This is Operation Moonlight, which we had a press conference about last month to extend this period of time that we had such success over the summer in our parks, at special events, et cetera, that we're extending this through the end of the year. We're excited to do this. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, that is all I have this evening.
Seeing no further business coming before council, is there motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We have three non-agenda speakers to come before us tonight.
We have three non-agenda speakers to come before us tonight.